I'll go to the regular meeting of the Caroline County Planning Commission, Thursday, August 28th, 2025. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country, following which the invocation will be delivered by our good friend, Mr. J.D. Young. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come this afternoon thanking you for all the blessings that you've shared upon us. Now, we've asked for our nurses and we ask for the point home for our nurses as well, Father, as we come tonight, we just ask that all we all have clear minds, clear understanding. First, first honor and respectful one another and all the county. We just ask this in your son Jesus's name, we pray and allow us to get through the county business successfully. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Young. Our commissioners, first item for business is the approval of the minutes from our commission meeting held Thursday, July 24th, 2025. Have had a chance to peruse the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? Think Mr. Tingler had one?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman. On page five, under the voting portion of SPEX 072025 for JCSA properties, I excluded myself from that vote due to conflict. And the minutes show me voting gay. While I would have, it was, I was excluded at that vote.
All right, so we'll change our records and I assume that the official minutes as they are recorded will be changed to reflect that you did not participate in a vote.
Yes, sir.
Also, Mr. Chairman, on page 49. No, on page 49, okay. At the top where the voting area, the voting nay should have been my name, Young, there.
Which page?
Page 49. At the top. Yeah. See it at the top, sir?
Yes, sir. They didn't include your name at all, did they?
No, sir.
Shows you what they care. All right, that record shall be so corrected. And I think also on page 47. The paragraph beginning with Mr. Hatlen said, "One additional item is the 2232 review." The third line down. It is recorded that a substantial court determination. Court should be accord, A-C-C-O-R-D. So if the record will reflect that change as well. Commissioners, I do not know of any additional changes or corrections unless someone else has one. And before we proceed further, neglected to, for the record, state who is present. We, to my far left is Mr. Steve Rollins of the Mattupanai District. To my left, Dr. Carol Horton, representing Port Royal. I'm Bob Schwartz, representing Bowling Green. To my right is our co-chair, Mr. Richard Williams, representing Western Caroline. To his right is Mr. J.D. Young, representing Reedy Church. And to the far right is Mr. Lee Tingler, representing the Madison District. Present also is Mr. Leon Hughes, our planning director. Mr. Brad Robinson, our zoning administrator. Mr. Max Hleven, Hleven, I'm going to get it right before I die. Mr. Max Hleven, the county attorney. And our sound and audio technician is Mr. Jeff Ford, back in the timeout booth. And with that. Commissioners, is there a motion regarding the minutes?
I move that we accept the minutes from the last communication with the necessary corrections.
I like that second.
Motion by Mr. Rollins, seconded by Mr. Young and Mr. Williams, I think it was.
Certainly.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. New business. Zoning and subdivision ordinance amendments.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. The planning commission at its June 26, 2025 meeting authorized public hearing for amendments to the zoning and subdivision ordinance to address changes in the state code that became effective July 1, 2025. And in addition, to address recent updates to the county's erosion settlement control regulations on stockpiles, as well as amendments to the site plan requirements and processes are also proposed. So tonight, what I propose to do is kind of walk through, as you can see on your screen there, it's kind of an outline of what you had in your packet. The first things that we'll talk about will be the changes that are required by the Code of Virginia in both the zoning ordinance and also the subdivision ordinance. And then we'll proceed down to where it says additional zoning and subdivision ordinance amendments. Those are additional items, amendments in the zoning ordinance as well as in the subdivision ordinance. And in the subdivision ordinance, specifically to talk about family divisions. And so that'll probably be a pretty in-depth conversation. So that's kind of how we're proposing to proceed tonight. The first part should go pretty quickly because the changes are, you know, essentially mandated by the Commonwealth. But I just want to walk you through those for you all's benefit and also for the benefit of the public. So, and then proceed to those additional changes in the ordinances that we are recommending. Most of it is to be cleanup items and correct issues that we deal with on a daily basis. So, with that. So here, packet, we are. So the first item related to changes brought on by the Code of Virginia is the section regarding non-conforming uses. And at the consultation with the county attorney's office, the first item related to vested rights already exists in the code by statute. And so we don't necessarily need to make any changes relative to that language because it's already essentially covered by the code. So the, those items related to vested rights won't be amended. But what we will also add in the, on page, flipping over the page 16-3 essentially, is to add some language that essentially clarifies the difference between non-conforming structures and non-conforming uses. So our current ordinance, the language is not very clear. The way it's written, it kind of uses the term "non-conforming structure interchangeably with uses," and that's really not appropriate. There are two separate items. You can have a non-conforming use and then you can have a non-conforming structure. And so we just need to make it clear in our ordinance that there is a distinction. And the way it's written right now, that distinction is not clear. So that's just some language that will be added in the ordinance to clarify that. Have any questions related to that at all?
I think you're good so far.
Okay. So then the next item is administrative enforcement section in your packet. And so the Code of Virginia changed and the change now prohibits us from requiring pre-application meetings related to rezonings and special exceptions. And so in our current ordinance, there is a requirement that an applicant have a pre-application. And so we're looking to amend this language so it's not required. We will still strongly suggest to applicants that they take advantage of our TRC technical review process for pre-applications because we feel like it provides them an opportunity to get a head start on items that could be potential potholes for their projects as they come through, begin the process. This is a free service that we offer. All of the agencies that are involved in review of rezoning applications or special exceptions or site plans are in attendance at these meetings. And the applicant gets to come in, lay out what they are proposing, and then the agencies get to provide them comment, you know, informal comment of items that they should be aware of as potential pitfalls when they begin the process. So we will continue to strongly encourage applicants to do so. And we just won't have it codified in the ordinance as it is right now. So.
Such meetings are greatly advantageous to the applicant and to the county as well.
Yes, they are. And I would say, you know, you, you all as commission members and board members are welcome to come. I mean, so if you want to get a, if there's a project in your district and you want to get a head start on it and understand something, feel free to attend. We do them twice a month. The second and fourth Thursday at each month of each month, starting at 9:15 a.m. We don't do any more than four applicants on a day so that we're not there all day. And we actually had to add that second Thursday because the number of applicants that we were having, you know, that wanted to come to pre-apps. So it's there for your avail if you so choose.
And what time do you start those, sir?
9:15.
Thank you.
And a lot of times there is a virtual option as well because sometimes engineers or applicants are not local. And so they don't have to physically be here. We do them virtually as well. So if you want a link to join virtually, we can make that happen for you. So. So next, we're going to the changes in the subdivision ordinance. So these changes are again mandated by the Code of Virginia because of, oh, according to effect on July 1. I would note on, Brad, can you scroll down just a little bit to bonds? There we go. So where it says bond in your packet, we missed commission there. So I highlighted it just to let you know that in your packet, it may not be blue. And so here, we picked it up and just want to point out that commission will be removed in that from that definition as well. And then also, under the blue text there where it says designated agent, the Code of Virginia now requires that we have this definition. And so what we're going to do is combine the terms designated agent and subdivision agent. And the very last or page of the definitions in the ordinance, the term subdivision agent is there. And so what we're going to do, you know, Brad has it on the screen now, is essentially rather than have two terms designated agent and subdivision agent, we will just combine subdivision agent and designated agent as a single term. So it's just a definition thing there.
I have a question. Under, on the first page, you're just taking out one word, commission?
Okay. Well, we'll amend that a little bit.
Yeah, the sentence would make, okay.
Because the code that went into effect on July 1 requires that PC be removed. And so we're just pointing out that that's where the word commission exists now and it's going to be
Yeah.
strict. Yeah. So it will have to be wordsmith to be grammatically correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And then I think as you scroll through your ordinance, if you, and I apologize that this section of the packet was not numbered. But overall, in section three, in the subdivision ordinance. There we go. Under administrative enforcement, the paragraph in blue there where it talks about the planning commission's review and approval of the plaits and everything, that language will be removed from the ordinance as well as mandated. And then flipping over to the next page, again, you see where we have identified the commission's involvement. Those will be changes that will be removed. And then moving on to section six. And yes.
Is it necessary to say the planning commission or is it okay to just say the commission?
Well, it's going to be removed, period. The code removes the planning commission's involvement.
Good. No problem. Yeah. Thank you.
And then over in section six, at the very beginning there in the first paragraph, there again, the commission is noted. And then flipping over to page 6-2. Again, it talks about the copies and the commission, the number of copies for sketches and plaits. And I will say the number of copies, hard copies that we are requiring applicants to submit is changing, it's being reduced because we are accepting electronic versions of plans now. And so there are only a couple of agencies that require hard copies. And so we don't need 21 copies or later where it talks about 10 copies. Now, we can get by with six copies. VDOT requires three. Health department requires one. And then our utilities guys also like a hard copy as well. So we're down, you know, we're reducing the number of hard copies that we need for the review process. So that's a benefit, you know, to the, to our applicants because it saves them a lot of money as well. And this is being brought on by the introduction of our new electronic file system that we have kicked off in the county allows us to do this. So this, one of those external benefits that comes along with the technology. So. And then proceeding on again on page 66, there's some changes, again, striking the commission. And then there'll be some amendments to the language that pertains to the performance guarantees that will require applicants to provide or bonding of their projects. So it, just FYI, the way it works in the process, if you don't know, if an applicant has a subdivision and they have improvements, public improvements that they've committed to as a part of the subdivision process, we require them to bond those requirements in case, for whatever reason, the particular company goes under, there are funds there to complete the, those public improvements. And so I will say, you'll see some additional language added so that we can make it clear that, you know, we the type of bonds and that it's a requirement. It'll be here in the subdivision ordinance and then also in the site plan section, we're going to add some language just to make it clear. So it just allows the development community or anybody that own a projects, when they pick up our ordinance and read what's required, that information will be there. So just provides them more information on what's required in the process. And then on page 68. There'll be some clarifying language, again, related to state code changes regarding the acceptance and dedication of improvements. And then where I talked about the 10 copies over on page 69. At the very top, you see there, it talks about subdivision supply, 10 copies. Well, we don't need 10 copies of documents anymore. So we'll make that amendment. So that is also codified. So. And I believe, oh, 611. There is some language that related to the EQ, evidence of the EQ coverage has been approved if applicable. And then the final section, changes reflect on vacation procedures. That is in response to changes in the code that went into effect on July 1. So that's in the subdivision ordinance. And then the site plan.
Mr. Hughes, before you go further, sir. I'm just wondering. The requirement for the DEQ stormwater management coverage, that's being removed from this section, is it still in force and in place elsewhere?
It is.
Okay, so this is just duplication.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I would say, you know, a lot of the changes, some of the, the majority of the changes that we're having to make into, in our ordinances because our ordinances have not been updated in a number of years. So there's just things that have just been left over that have been changed years ago, but it's happened to be left in our ordinance right now. So.
Thank you. That's good.
Yep. All right. So moving on to site plans. And in the definitions section, so in that first section there, definitions, that blue paragraph there is being updated to reflect current language, especially as related to those additions of text that are used to, you know, make determinations on definitions that they were extremely outdated. And so now that language is being amended to reflect the most current texts that are out there. Then coming down, and this may be a little premature out of my outline, but I'll just go over it now since we're here. One of the changes I want to make to the site plan or the definitions is to add a definition for site plan. And it's more than one definition. So in our current ordinance right now, we have a single definition for site plan. There's only a single process for doing development in the county. Right now, the ordinance reads that any development in the county has to have a site plan, no matter what it is. There are no options. So if you were simply doing a very small project, there's no provision in the order to do a minor site plan that might not require all of the things that are needed for a major site plan, but you don't have that option right now. You have to do everything that's in a major site plan for a very small project. So it's kind of like killing a fly with a sledgehammer. As well as, you know, creating some other site plan definitions. So one of the things that we don't have in the county right now is a building addition process. So a business wants to add on a freezer is a very common one to the back of a building or something. And it's less than 2500 square feet of development. There's no changes to the utilities. There's no changes to the parking or anything like that. Or right now, that small project to add that minimal addition to that building has to go through a complete site plan process. So we are introducing this building addition site plan so that that project could come directly to the county and go to the, the building official as a normal building permit and just be in addition to that building, which is really the only review that will be involved in the process. So rather than expending county resources, sending a plan to utilities and to VDOT and to the health department and, you know, that gets eliminated in those types of projects. And so I think that's a very good addition to the, to the process and in the business friendly. The other definition for site plan that we are adding is a site plan for linear trail. So if someone was coming in and it said they had a piece of property and they wanted to add a trail system to their project. We have a, we're creating a plan definition that would address that because there again, they are beholden to the requirements in the ENS and stormwater. But they're not required, they don't have requirements for everything else like utilities or park, you know, maybe some parking overhaul, but utilities and other items that aren't needed for utilities and other items that aren't needed for something like that. So this creates a definition that would allow someone doing that to have a process that is more specific to what they are doing in that instance. Um, and then also same with infrastructure, you may have a project that for whatever reason is coming in and making changes to their infrastructure. So then you know, it could be solely with, on the site, they could be changing water lines or sewer lines or, you know, um, as a part of a, an accessory use on the property or something, they might need to extend some utilities. Now, we're creating a definition that provides an option for them to do that without having to go through the, the, the overall process. It still includes the appropriate level of review by the county. But it is just a much more streamlined process and doesn't necessarily, it may go just to utilities in that instance. And then require the resources of everyone else of getting a package to review and then saying, oh, I don't have any comments on that. So um, it will just be one less, um, project that shows up on somebody's desk that doesn't need it. So. And then we are, uh, I think the really the other two major things are, Brad, I think on the next page now, are the, uh, definitions for site plan major and site plan minor. Um, and what I've added the red text, um, on the screen is some language that's not in your packet. But you know, right now we have a definition for major, like I said, for site plans. It encompasses everything. Um, and we want to just amend that definition to clarify, um, when a site plan is required, but also amended to encompass the current language that is in article fifteen, section fourteen for site plan. So we, we realize that talking with Max, um, the way that, that the definition is drafted right now where it stops at ten thousand square feet, might create a, a gap there, might create a hole in the process. So what we're gonna do is when you see this come back, it will encompass the language you see. But also language that captures what's in the current ordinance. So we won't be losing anything. Um, just the definition will expand a little bit and make sure we don't have any unintended consequences when the, the language gets adopted. So just wanted to point that out. And then also what's not added here is that we will add the requirements, um, related to stockpile in section fourteen. So FYI, and zoning ordinance in section fifteen or article fifteen, section fourteen, that is the, uh, site plan requirements section. And so these, um, stockpile language that was adopted requires that the applicant identify on their site plans, um, where their stockpiles will be, the height of their stockpiles, how they're going to dispose of those stockpiles. Um, and that type of information, that is now a site plan requirement. And so we wanted to amend section, uh, fourteen so that it's clear for applicants when they come into the county and they go to this section to see what's required for a site plan, those items will be there as well. So it will also be in the ENS ordinance, but this allows it to be here. So there's less opportunity for it to be overlooked. Um, and so we don't have to, hopefully have to make comments on a plan. Oh, you forgot to put this information on your site plan. Now it's right there on the, the list of items that's required. So the applicants will see it and they will know. Oh, when I do a site plan, I've gotta also include these items related to stockpiles. So rather than having to go jump, because sometimes they might not go think intuitively, they might not think to go look at the ENS section for stockpiles. Um, for site plan requirements, here it will be there and they won't have to look for it. It'll be right in front of them. So. And then, uh, finally related to site plans, you know, we're introducing a minor site plan. For those smaller projects, um, that are between twenty-five hundred and ten thousand square feet that don't necessarily have to have all of the requirements of a major site plan. And so an example might be, uh, the expansion of a parking area. It's something I can think about. It's pretty easy. Um, someone's gotta say a six thousand square foot expansion of a parking area. They would be able to come in and do a minor site plan. Because it doesn't have, you know, it's not impacting their VDOT entrance, it's not impacting utilities. So they could come in, have that plan routed to the appropriate agencies in the county and have it approved and, you know, move on with their project. So we see these as all as been business friendly amendments that will um, save our development community money. It will save the county, uh, money as well in terms of staff time, um, to review plans. And so we just view it as a positive all around. So. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions related to that. If you have any or any, have any thoughts related to any of that at all.
Just a quick question, uh, Mr. Hughes. Uh, under the minor site plan. Is anything required now? Because I, I don't have it memorized. Uh, I can't memorize my own name sometime. But is there anything requiring a minor site plan for anything less than twenty-five hundred square feet?
Well, right now, yes. Right now you have to do, you have to do a full site plan.
Uh, under the, the new verbiage, will a site plan still be required for anything less than twenty-five hundred?
No.
And I have no problem with it either way.
Yeah, right. No, but it, it, it makes that clear as well. Yeah.
So on the additions on the, or twenty-five hundred feet, so there's nothing that you could add on that would require input from the health department? Would there be anything that would typically, or are we saying that there's nothing that you could add if you do an addition that would require notification? Because you guys notify, notify the health department when somebody wants to do something. So I was just wondering, is there anything that somebody, if they wanted to do in addition would require triggering the health department for input? Based on this, they wouldn't be, well, you would notify, you would have to make a determination whether they, the health department would be notified.
Yeah. If, if it was something that was going to, so let's say, from a commercial perspective. If you have a commercial operation that is operating on a well or a, uh, septic system, if it was gonna be something that might impact uh, the water usage or was gonna add people where they may get triggered into a, uh, have to have approved through the office of drinking water. Because they were adding some type of space or if there was something that was gonna impact their septic system, then the health department will be notified in that sense.
You just wouldn't do a site plan, you, but you would just notify the health department?
We would just notify them anyway. Yeah, we build into shit. Yeah. So if it was a building that was on, uh, public water and sewer and it was a twenty-five hundred square foot addition of, like I, I use the example of a freezer or if it was just some additional space, storage space or something, no, we wouldn't help notify the health department.
Is there a limit to how many times they can do that? Because what's to stop them from doing twenty-five hundred square foot this year? Twenty-five hundred square foot next year, et cetera?
Nothing.
Okay.
There're gonna be some other external factors. Okay. So there're gonna be site setbacks requirements, you know.
I just don't want somebody looking for a loophole to be able to put ten thousand square feet on without some oversight.
No, no. And, and with the number of, at some point, we're gonna say, wait. You know. Yeah. Any other questions? Okay. So now the fun part, I think. I think we've been through that part. So now the family subdivision part, which is, uh, something that is a provision. Fifteen point two, twenty-two forty-four from the Code of Virginia mandates that we have a provision in our subdivision ordinance for giving, uh, for creating parcels to family members. And Brad, can you pull up the, uh, PowerPoint? I think I have a an excerpt from the Code of Virginia there. There we go. So this is the excerpt from the Code of Virginia fifteen point two, twenty-two forty-four, um, provision or subdivision of a lot for conveyance to a family member. That's the official title of that provision. Um, and it identifies any county subdivision or shall provide reasonable provisions for permitting a single division of a lot or parcel for the purpose of sale or gift to a member of the immediate family of the property owner, including the family member spouse. Subject to only any express requirement contained in the Code of Virginia and any requirement imposed by the local governing body that all lots less than five acres have reasonable right of way of less than, not less than ten feet or more than twenty feet providing ingress and egress to a dedicated recorded public street or thoroughfare. Only one such division shall be allowed per family member and shall not be for the purpose of circumventing this section. Now, the red is highlighted because this is where we have to talk a little bit about our current ordinance. For the purpose of this subsection, a member of the immediate family is defined as any person who is a natural or legally defined offspring, stepchild, spouse, sibling, grandchild, grandparent or parent of the owner. In addition, any such locality may like with emphasis on may, include aunts, uncles, nieces and nephews in its definition of immediate family. I emphasize that may because our current definition, um, allows that latter part, aunts, uncles, nieces and nephews. And so just hang on to that for, for thought. Um, because that expands greatly who is eligible for a family division and opportunities to provide or create lots under this provision. So under our current ordinance right now, um, Brad, I think I have a slide that has the language of our current ordinance. No, it's actually in the Well, actually you can go down, just scroll down from the RP, it's there. Yeah. Yep. So right now, the lang, the text that you see in blue is, uh, language in our current ordinance. And so you can do a family division in the rural preservation district. Um, the minimum lot size should be two acres. The lot area and other dimension requirements should be the same as that for a two acre lot in the RR two zoning district. The parent tract shall maintain the minimum lot size required in the RP zoning district or half the size of the original lot size, whichever is less. The overall sketch plans showing future proposed family divisions shall be provided. A common driveway entrance shall be utilized in accordance with section five dash twenty of the subdivision ordinance. And so that's the, the current language of our, um, family division provision. I should note that this is in the zoning ordinance. This is not in the subdivision ordinance, which is problematic. So one of the changes that we're proposing is to move this language into the subdivision ordinance where it belongs. And also currently, our subdivision ordinance does not have a definition for family division. And so we would create a definition for family division, um, in the subdivision ordinance. The other thing about our ordinance is that there's not an exempt section in our subdivision ordinance. Now, what that means is a, a section of the ordinance that makes it explicit that family divisions or any other type of divisions that we would have, more commonly you would see uh, utility lots, well lots, um, cemeteries, someone ought to do a cemetery, would be in an exempt section of a subdivision ordinance because they are not beholden to the requirements of the subdivision ordinance itself. So when you look in the subdivision ordinance, you see requirements for preliminary plat. You see what you have to do on, the items you have to have on your preliminary plat. You see the requirements for, um, the final plat and all the things you have to have on your final plat. You see the requirements for bonding. You see the requirements for streets. Um, you know, all of these things are in the subdivision ordinance. These divisions are not beholden to those because as you can see, you can do it on an easement of at least, you know, ten and not more than twenty feet. You know, you don't have to have any road frontage requirements. Um, you know, you don't have to have curb gutter. It's essentially just cutting a lot. So all of those other provisions in the subdivision ordinance don't apply. And so from my perspective, it makes sense to carve out a section in the subdivision ordinance for exempt items. So it's clear because there is sometimes some confusion. Um, I've had people who picked up our subdivision ordinance and said, well, am I beholden to all of these other items because it's in the subdivision ordinance and there's no distinction that these divisions aren't, don't have to comply with these items. And so creating that exempt section would essentially say, everything in this section is exempt from all of these other items. But here are the requirements that you have to follow for these types of divisions, whatever they may be. And so we'll talk about that a little bit more, but I wanted to kind of explain that a little bit. Um, so when you see it come back, you understand why there's a, a, a new section called exempt. Um, and it would be specific for those. And I, I mentioned those other types of divisions, you know, utility lots, well lots. You know, it's very uncommon, it's very common, I should say, for a jurisdiction that didn't have, um, you know, a water system countywide that someone might wanna come in and create a well for a project and they might wanna, you know, have it on a separate lot for whatever reason. I mean, I, I think of sometimes utilities do it. When I say utilities, like, uh, you know, RIC, Dominion, Verizon. Uh, we had a situation just recently where Verizon came in and wanted to put in a, uh, or a switching station, you know, essentially for, for telecommunications. And, you know, they only needed, I think, was it two acres, Brad? Yeah, they only needed like two acres. Um, but there's really not an easy way for that property owner to sell Verizon two acres or create a, you know, carve out two acres to sell to Verizon to do that. We don't have a provision for that. So, you know, creating those types of divisions under that exempt, um, status, you know, would allow those things to occur. And, you know, there's a provision for, there's a way to do it. You know, it just creates an opportunity to do it. Um, our own utilities department, you know, at some point, they will have pump stations. And they will want pump stations to be on, uh, someone's property and someone's property done, they may not want to have that encumbrance on their property. So they may say, hey, can I carve out an acre and a half or a pump station? Well, that would allow us an opportunity to do that, you know. So it, it's just another tool in the toolbox is what it is. It's, you know, it's not widely used, but right now we don't have any provision to do it. So this is trying to be a little bit, providing some forethought to situations that occur every day in the real world and give us a way to deal with them. So. So enough about kind of those housekeeping items related to, um, family subdivisions. You know, the, the board asked us to look at the family subdivisions because um, like Caroline is not unique in the Commonwealth. The family subdivision provision is probably one of the most abused portions in any jurisdictions, uh, ordinance. And right now, you know, you create a, uh, family subdivision, you have to hold it for five years before it can be transferred. Well, our language is a little iffy because it says transfer to an immediate family member. So, or non-immediate family member. So there've been some instances where that language has been, um, manipulated a little bit, for lack of a better term, and, and parcels been transferred back and forth between family members because they meet that definition as the way it's written of immediate family member. So you know, it, it, th- there's always someone who's gonna look to circumvent an ordinance no matter what you do, but, but you know, the board has asked us to look at ways to, to tighten it up. Um, and there are any number of ways that, that can be accomplished. And so I think if you notice in your packet, um, you have a sheet called possible provisions for consideration.
Um, Mr. Hughes, can I have a question too? If you go back, we were talking about the aunts and uncles and that's blue, that's currently in there, you're saying?
I know what I was saying. So he put that up, Brad. So this is the, the red language is how the state So, this is the, the red language is how the state code defines immediate family member. And, right now, our definition of family member includes the addition. Of aunts, uncles, nieces, and nephews.
Ours does?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does that like include like step-aunts, step-uncles?
Stepchild is not included, right?
Well.
It's included in the, in the, the first part of the definition.
Here, yeah, but I'm looking at the sheet here, it does.
So, what you have, uh, what you have there is a, I think you're looking at a. Chart of the various jurisdictions from around the Commonwealth.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, you're saying right now, um, the red is.
The red, this is straight out of the code of Virginia, this is what's in the code of Virginia.
Okay, so the red is a code of Virginia, and we have to do that?
Yes, up to where it says, uh, owner. And then that last sentence, in addition.
So, okay, yeah, doesn't matter, okay.
So, in addition, any such locality may include aunts, uncles, nieces, and nephews.
We don't have to include in addition.
Right, you don't have.
Now I've got, I've got.
Yes, you do not, but we do, so.
But we do right now.
What we do right now, yes.
Personally, I think we need to trim the family tree down.
So, let's, let's. Okay, so can we go through the possible items first and then we'll start talking about what you.
Absolutely, yeah, cuz I, I'm loaded with ideas on this one.
Um, so, eh, these are just some things that we kind of have come up with for consideration. This is no by, not by any means an exhaustive list of ideas. Like I said, you can come up with anything you would like, uh, I'm pretty sure with. That Max feels like that he can defend. Um, but I can, I will say this, as there, as many counties as there are in the Commonwealth, there are. Every family division is probably a little bit different. I don't think you could find two that are the same. They may have some similarities, but I would doubt that they are exact. Um, so, um, don't, you know. Don't be deterred. Don't let your creativity be deterred, I would say, so. But, things that we thought of that might be appropriate, um. You know, standards for construction, for the access easement, uh, to the new parcels. You could consider, um, the width, you could consider the maintenance agreements, um, being a requirement, uh, which is what I, I really like. Um, and you can consider the construction, uh, of what that eas- that easement, uh, is. You know, increasing the length of time, a parcel must be held before it can be transferred. Uh, you could also require a restrictive covenant to be placed on a new parcel that prohibits transfer of that parcel. You could clarify the language of the ordinance that the limitations of transfer apply to the original grantor of the parcels. You could require the minimum lot size conform to the minimum of the district, um, and as proposed. Um, you could amend the definition of eligible family to match the code of Virginia, eliminating family members. Um, you could limit the number of family divisions allowed per parent parcel. You could restrict the parcels created by family divisions or family provisions from being subdivided via family divisions. Or limit the number of allowed divisions. And you could reevaluate the special exception provision allowing family subdivisions that do not comply. With condition of Article four, section two. Um, and I'll just take a minute there to explain what that means. So, in the subdivision ordinance, there is a provision that allows a special exception for lots that are. Um, that don't comply, so let's say I have, uh. A, a two acre parcel, let's say. And I want to give a one acre parcel to a family member. There is a provision in our ordinance that allows that individual to come and apply for a special exception to do that. Um, I, I, I would say. I'm not opposed to having that special exception allowance there. Because I think it, uh, provides an opportunity to address the unique oppo- the unique situation that pops up. You know, no ordinance can address every single item, but this is a, an opportunity and a tool. That if there is an odd situation, then there's an avenue for a citizen to potentially address that odd situation. Um, so, you know, I'm not a, a, I don't see anything wrong with having that tool there. Because like I said, in a county like Caroline where, you know, the lot sizes have changed. Like we have a ten acre minimum in our RP district and a twenty-five acre minimum in our, um. AP district along the river, you will have lots that are less than that size. Just because they were created, you know, many, many years ago and the standards were different. And so people don't necessarily have a twenty-five acre or a ten acre lot, just because they got that land. You know, those lots were created years ago and now the situation is they might want to pass it on. So, there's an avenue there for those unique situations that arise, so I, I just throw that out there. Um, as, you know, potential. It, it's not harmful now, they provide some oversight. So, through the, through the planning commission and ultimately through the board, so, um, you could address those unique situations. And I had a thought, that was something else I was gonna say, but it, it has slipped my mind, I'm sure it's come to me in a minute, but. You have in your packet, like I said, information on how some of our neighboring jurisdictions deal with family divisions. Uh, we provided that to you just for, you know, to hopefully, um, spur your thoughts, but. Um, welcome to hear your ideas and concerns relative to. How we might amend the family division provisions, um. Going forward, so.
You know, it's very unfortunate. That these provisions initially were brought forward. Trying to be a help to the senders, citizens of the county. And some people sought to take advantage and misuse and abuse it. Which requires us to tighten up on them. I don't know if you are, you would rather have our suggestions in writing. Uh, or we put them out on the table here. Uh, we, we could be here to midnight, I think, if we probably put them out here on the table. But I'll leave that up to my fellow commissioners, uh, if there are some things that you want to discuss here, and let, let's discuss them.
But I, I think I had two items that I need a little clarity on, I'm not, I'm not making any recritization, I just want some clarity. So, I have a, a partial of ten acres. And I choose to give two acres to my sister. So, I can, I can distribute two acres. Three more times. Until I get down to where I, where I only have two acres currently.
Five, ten acres. Cuz that would, that means your parcel would be four acres, you would have to at least maintain five.
So, I could give two acres away twice.
Twice.
And then what is the down, what is the negative on requiring? Or not having a requirement on ownership of the property for. So, if I buy, you know, if I've only owned the property for a year, what is the downside? As far as not having a restriction, let's say five years, so what, what is the benefit to the? To the property owner to not have it greater than one year or five, or up to five years?
Well, Mr. Jones, I'm glad you asked that question the way you asked it. Because I, I worked in a jurisdiction where the family division only required a one-year holding period. So, I could create a parcel, family division parcel for my son Brad. And he only had to hold that parcel for one year before it could be transferred, twelve months. That ordinance also had a weird provision in it, well, it, which is, eh, the ordinance had the provision in it. But a, a common thing that happens is, he wants to build a house. He goes to a builder, builder gets a construction loan for that house on that parcel. And then would turn around and as soon as that one-year period is up. That builder, you know, would essentially purchase that home and then turn around and sell it on the open market. So, that's one benefit of, to the owner, property owner of not having a restriction. You know, or having a restriction of only one year. And I can tell you, it was heavily, heavily abused, um, with one year. Um, so, the downside for the jurisdiction, and even at five years. You know, we see instances of parcels being created and being held for five years. I mean, five years is not a long time. Um, and then those are assets that are now ready to be transferred to whomever. So, that's a benefit to the property owner, it is. But it's also, there's a negative side because essentially what happens is you've created, um, quasi subdivisions in the county. Um, in areas where you may not necessarily want to have multiple subdivisions and you have impacts on your road network. Um, you have impacts, um, on existing property owners who live there. And may not have had it, ever had any intention of having twelve neighbors, um, all of a sudden. So, you know, there, you can look at it from the. Capitalist property rights perspective, uh, I should be able to create these lots on my property and. Create these assets and sell them as I wish, or you can look at it from the broader community perspective of. What is the impact of these new lots on my, my neighbors, my school system, my transportation network, my sheriff's department? You know, um, and then the situations where you happen to have a property transferred to somebody that you just don't get along with. I mean, I, I've seen unfortunate situations where people have deeded parcels to, uh. Son or daughter and for whatever reason, they, son or daughter decided they were gonna sell the property and. Now, all of a sudden, they have, the parents have neighbors that they never intended to have and, you know, that are not family. They have an easement or access that runs right by their house and now all of a sudden you got strangers that live right next door to me. And oh, well, that guy might be a truck driver and now he's driving his eighteen-wheeler across that easement that he's legally entitled to do. Or he might be a motor guy, a motorhead and he has, you know. Cars that he fixes and works on, have in his garage and now at, you know, ten o'clock at night, he's working on his cars when. So, there, I mean, there are any, I have seen a number of situations where, you know, these things have, have not turned out for the best. Now, on the, to the contrary, I've seen situations where it's worked out really well. We have very nice family compounds that were created through family divisions, so. They, you know, it, it is just a matter of weighing both sides of the coin, really.
So, would that, would that warrant, I know we said there would be an, you could have an exception to lot size. Would that warrant a need for an exception for lot ownership? I mean, if, so if something, cuz I don't know who would, how the decision would be made to approve one that's less than two acres. You know, what that reason would be for it to be approved? So, if something came about where in two, and let's say we did a five-year ownership. And something, a need came where someone who had a, a partial. Needed to do something with it, let's say, two and a half years.
Yeah.
Into their ownership, would that want to be put in the exception column or not?
Yes, and, and one of the things that I think I failed to mention is that we would, in the new language, we would build in, uh. Some type of exception clause, because there are circumstances where that has happened, I have seen that as well. And, and, and legitimate circumstances, for whatever reason, who knows? I mean, health reasons is a common one where, you know. Somebody needs to transfer the property and, and it's a legitimate reason, I mean, so, yeah, there should be some type of exception in there. I mean, I, I agree with that whole hardly, I mean, like I said, that's something that would not necessarily be abused. And would have oversight by the, the board at minimum. Um, and so, you know, if someone had that, as a matter of fact, excuse me, we have a provision right now for some exceptions. And I think, uh, a few months back, we actually had a case before the board for an exception. Um, so, yes. The, the other thing I would say, the other piece of this puzzle, as you contemplate these changes. Um, Brad, can you bring up the, the ADU? Definitions, so, I, I, I would say this, one of the things that I find. Caroline to be kind of, uh. Maybe ahead of its time on a little bit, is the fact that everything you see on the screen right now, the accessory apartment. The accessory, um, dwelling unit, the apartment family, the dwelling accessory or family apartment. The family apartment, the in-law suite, these are all provisions in our ordinance right now. That allow additional dwelling units on existing parcels. So, you know, we have a number of options and opportunities for individuals that own property. That if they need to have a, a, an accessory dwelling unit, there's a provision for that to occur in the ordinance right now. So, the, the counter.
The property owner would be the legal owner of the in-law suite? Or would that, would the property still transfer to the in-laws?
Eh, these are, these are provisions that come without any subdivision of the land. So, there's no transfer of ownership of land here, but there are, it's the addition of a dwelling unit of some type. Now, I will say, definitions do have some issues that we need to address. Cuz there's some contradictions in a couple of these de- definitions where. Essentially, it's the same definition and it doesn't, uh, you can do it in one district, but you can't do it in the, another district. And it's the exact same definition, so there does need to be some cleanup, but my point here is. There are options in the existing ordinance for people to create accessory dwelling units. Um, on their, on their properties, right now, I mean, today.
Do we, do we have that page, what page?
No, you, you don't have this in your packet, no. I, I wanted to add this to the discussion, just so you understand that if you. Going, adding ex- additional restrictions, I'll say. Does not preclude opportunities, you know, even with those additional restrictions.
Nice to have a copy of that, too.
Certainly, you can't, I'll get you that, yeah, yeah. So, that's something to think about, so if you want to, you know, if you wanted. Make the, uh, requirements extremely restrictive, then you could do so without being concerned that. There aren't any other options for citizens, because here there are, so.
Mr. Hughes, right now, family subdivisions are listed. In RP zones. Uh, that's just something that bugs me a little bit, that if we move family subdivisions into a different category. That we're gonna start blurring the lines. And. I don't want to see us get into a situation where, uh. Mr. Smith owns twenty acres of land just outside of, uh. The town of Bowling Green, for example, that is not in an RP zone. That moving it into a family subdivision would allow him to go for a family subdivision. When it may not be in the best interest of the county and of itself. However, if we keep it within an RP zone. We're on a foundational basis that we're already familiar with and working with. So, tha- that's what I'm having a bit of difficulty with, that the rest of it is, uh, balls and strikes. And we, we can work the rest of it out.
Yeah, well, well, let me clarify, cuz I understand your concern, so, moving it. I should have, maybe I didn't explain it the best. Um, the restriction you would, could still maintain. The restriction you would, could still maintain the restriction that it'd only be in RP. The, the point that I was making is that this is a subdivision provision that is in the zoning ordinance. It, it should be in the, the rules and regulations that govern this type of division should be in the subdivision ordinance. Not the zoning ordinance in terms of how the mechanics of doing it. But you could still maintain the restriction that it'd only be in RP. That, I, I understand why you got to that thought process because. Yeah, I could see that. But we would still maintain the restriction. It would not be.
Oh, yes, we, we can still do the restrictions.
No, I mean, even in the RP, you could still limit it to the RP, yes.
In RP.
Yes, and just move those mechanics into the appropriate subdivision ordinance where they belong because they relate to the division of property. Not the bulk requirements.
And we can mold and shape it into the best interest of the citizens.
Yes, exactly right.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and I apologize that.
No problem.
I wasn't clear, but yeah, you, yeah.
Commissioners, any further questions? Uh, any thoughts, discussion?
Is there any limitation to how creative we can get with this? If you will. Obviously, there, there are constitutional laws and things like that. We have to be careful of, but. Beyond those issues, is there any limitation to the creativity there? By the way, I live in one of these family subdivisions. My, my parents, the house that I live in. Uh, was on the original parcel and my parents cut that off. I bought it from them. They built a house next door to me. Um, so I can see both sides of this coin. You know, I have no intention of ever selling, uh, which will, you know. Eliminated a lot of these problems that the, the county faces, but I can also see the abuse that we've talked about in it. And I'm more than happy to try to get rid of all of that. But i- is there limitations to it? I mean, can you say it's got to be owned fifteen years or?
Well, what, what I was going to suggest is I can send the commissioners sort of the rules of the road for family subdivision and, and. What the statutory language is that applies and that will give you a framework um for the authority that Caroline County has. And, uh, but I do think the examples that um. Brad and Leon provided in your packet with respect to what your neighboring jurisdictions are doing, they have similar authority. Uh, and you can see the variety in the way that they, they treat these things, but there is fairly broad authority for these um, this type of high growth area.
Mr. Dangler, if, if you go back in, into this section here, uh, it's a wide range. Uh, and the thing of it is that I'm not trying to give a leak, give a, a legal definition. We cannot do something that is less stringent than state law. But we can do something that is more stringent. So, you know, that gives us wide area.
Mr. Hughes, uh, uh, oh, actually, um. Mister, hi. Heavlin, okay. Are there any restrictions to if we, if? If the land was transferred to a family member. Something happens with that family member, that land would still have to stay with another family member as opposed to selling outside of a family member.
Many ordinances include provisions that are, have exceptions in the case of a death or a divorce or a court order or something of that nature. Um, but that's not explicitly addressed in the statute.
But I'm saying that's, that is something we could consider incorporating.
Within the family subdivision agreements that are normally required or, or any um, you know, deed restrictions that are placed in a, on a property. That is something that could be considered.
And maybe even take it a step further. If it become a situation where the next family member could not obtain that property. Maybe that's something that the county could step in and purchase to eliminate any further.
Well, I mean, the county has every right to purchase property just like everybody else. Um, you know, building that sort of mechanism into the. Ordinance may present some problems. Um, but as far as an arms-length transaction, that is always a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Would you start getting pushed back if the county starts buying parcels out of distressed family situations?
Out of distress?
Well, if there's a, a death or a divorce or something like that and the next family member can't afford it, uh.
I mean, that would be the rules that you play in order to, if you decide that you want to. Subdivide this property to a family member. I mean, you have to have some type, that's gambling.
Yeah, but it puts the, it puts the county in a position where they're buying and selling real estate.
I mean, county does that anyhow, right?
Uh, yeah, yeah, fair. Fair enough.
Just, just a, just a thought. I'm not saying that that's what we should do, but just, just a thought.
Yeah, just trying to work through the machinations in my head to understand, you know. We, I don't know that we want to be in the real estate game, so to speak.
I would be for ti- you know, you got this list of tightening up, I would be, I think it's a good list.
So are we going to? We're gonna give our recommendations later or how?
It's just my fault, but uh I think we should reduce our. Recommendations, concerns into writing and submit them to the uh, to the staff. Uh, for consideration because they, they've got to compile all of, all of this. Uh, that way, we could discuss it until breakfast time and uh. Uh, staff probably still wouldn't have a, a clear understanding of where we're going. But uh, I think if we reduce it to writing, it gives us time to think of how do I want to word this? And then we could submit it to staff.
Can, can I?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that. And that's a very good idea. I, I just want to throw one out that I'd like to get some, some guidance on or some feedback on. So one of the things that I think you could impose or require is. Or our standards for the access. So that's something to think about. Right now, the county's private road standard is essentially a VDOT standard. So you could put, you could, you could require that the access be built to the private road standard. Um, so one of the things I think, you know, to, to think about, as I have thought about a lot is, is that. It's a pretty significant requirement. I mean, it's a pretty hefty requirement to have to build a road. To our private road standard. You're essentially building a VDOT road. That's our private road standard. So, my question to the commission is, is, do you have any thoughts on having a requirement that is that? Stringent?
Uh, it will be included in one of my recommendations.
You're saying a cutoff right now requires a VDOT?
No.
What, what, explain what you said again.
I, I use it as an example. Let's say I want to create a fam- I own twenty acres and I want to give my son. You know, five acres at the rear of my property. I have to create an easement to get to that property.
Correct.
To get to his parcel.
I think it's fifty foot or something right now.
Minimum of ten, maximum of twenty, but that, let's say our ordinance. Yeah, let's say our ordinance says that. That easement, that access has to be built to a private road standard. So essentially, that's.
That's VDOT.
That's a base, yeah, asphalt.
It's not just a muddy path getting back to the backside of grandpa's house.
So it's no longer like a driveway. It's got to be VDOT standard getting to this cutoff.
This is driveway, this is a very nice driveway. I mean, this is something to think about. I mean, you know, you know, and that's what I'm asking for you all those thoughts on that because in that, you know. There are pros and cons, two sides every corner. It, it imposes a hefty requirement on the citizens that want to do this. But by the same token, it also poses a high bar for doing it.
And we, I think we still need some kind of standards. We don't want it to be a muddy path. So it needs some kind of standards, not necessarily VDOT, but certainly, you know, there needs to be. Gravel, some, some type of ba- you know, base. And right now, I mean, they could put it in, but that doesn't mean they have to maintain it, correct?
And that's another provision that we would think about is requiring a road maintenance agreement. I think we should have a road maintenance agreement on every subdivision that creates parcels with access easements, uh, you know, just.
Yeah, my mom lives on a private road and they all have a road maintenance agreement. Five parcels.
And how many? I know we said, but how many cutoffs are allowed right now? One per parcel?
There's no restriction. You can have, if you have enough acreage, you could. Create as many as you have eligible people to give them to.
Okay, because I remember, I'm just thinking about the old. Regulation. Okay, that's why it's being abused so much then. Uh, but you have to still maintain something like ten acres right now.
Fifty percent, right?
Fifty percent of the parent property. And then what you cut off is down to two acre lots. Yeah, that, that could be a lot. I think we need to get a handle on that.
That's what we've been tasked with.
Let's see if we can't get some suggestions into staff uh within the next two weeks. Because I'm sure they want to move forward on it because the board wants to move forward. So. I will endeavor to get you uh an Exodus version, you know, about eight, eight thick. Uh, within two weeks, sir. Anything else from the commissioners uh regarding this matter? Anything further?
So.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
One other quick item. Do you guys have any thoughts on the holding period? So, right, right now it's five years. You know, and, and I say there are two components to the holding period. So let's say I buy a parcel today. Should I be required to hold it for a certain amount of time before I am eligible to do family divisions? And then on the other side of that, should there be a holding period for the person who receives the family division?
Yes.
I think in one of the district jurisdictions we provided you, there is a requirement that they have, the. Owner has to have it for a certain number of years before they are even eligible to do a family division. So, that's something to think about as well.
Absolutely.
I mean, yeah, so if you think.
Looks like King, King George is saying.
Fifteen years?
Fifteen. Before.
Well, five years prior to, to subdivision and then fifteen years to hold, to hold.
So you got to own it at least five years and then the next person. Explain that, can you explain that better?
So in King George, if I look at that um chart, it looks like you have to. Own it for five years prior to subdivision and then. You have to hold it for fifteen years after they receive it.
Before you can do something else with it.
Right.
The recipient.
Right.
So in other words, if you, if you bought. Twenty acres, you'd have to have it at least five years. Before you started doing a cutoff and then the person that gets the cutoff has to have it at least fifteen. Okay. Yeah, that, that makes, that's, that would slow things down a bit.
That reduces some of your land speculators.
Yeah.
If, if the recipient would have to get more than two acres to be able to do anything with it anyhow, right? Unless there's an exception we've made for the one acre.
Anything further, Mr. Hughes?
Yeah, we do have uh under any and all.
I was gonna say regarding.
Oh, oh.
Oh, okay, because I was going to move to any and all matters on the towers.
Oh, please, sir.
Any and all matters, initiation of text amendment regarding the permitting of towers.
So do we just email Mr. Hughes or we can see him personally or? Okay.
Feel free to email, drop by, you know. We're open.
Yeah, I think.
I'll send him the Bob and let him put them together. On an Excel spreadsheet.
So I will say just for some context. In terms of the family division, I think over the past two years, we've done forty-seven. Forty-five, I'm sorry, forty-five. Forty-five family divisions in the past two years.
Wow.
Were they large?
I don't have the specifics on those.
Okay.
It's all I could do to figure out how many there were.
We have seen quite a few come through.
So any and all matters. So, right now in our ordinance, we have a definition. For uh communication facilities and we have a definition for towers. The communication facilities definition um is clearly geared towards um. Commercial cell facilities, you know, cell towers for cell providers. But we don't, and we have this definition for tower, which is. Clearly intended for any other type of tower that. Let's say a business may need. A good example is um, you have a company that has. Um, a fleet of trucks or employees that are on the road. And they have a tower to, you know, to communicate with those, their fleet. Well, we don't. Have enumerated anywhere in our ordinance where you could have such a tower. Um, and so although we have this definition. And so this any and all matters in this text amendment is proposed to um allow someone to have a tower. Um, that is not necessarily a commercial cell tower for, you know. The broader use. I mean, you could think of, you know, plumbing companies or, you know. Electrical companies that have radio systems that need to communicate with employees. There's no mechanism for them to have a tower. Um, on their property that to serve those individuals. The other component of this is the, you know, kind of the. One of the things we've thought about as a part of this is the, the radio, the ham radio um, community. Who are out there and um, you know. Have a desire for, you know, some type of antennas as well. They, they do have some provisions, but I think it's one of those things that. We need to think about as we talk about these towers. Um, because, you know, the unintended consequence would be you adopt an ordinance and you have a proliferation of towers just popping up because you could do it. Um, of course, we don't want that to happen and so we would come with some type of restriction. And of course, this would be by special exception is what our thought is at this point as well, that you couldn't just come in and do a, a tower. Um, as a by right use. That's not what we're after here, but we are looking for a mechanism for um. You know, entities to have a tower that is not um for. You know, cell service or, you know, beyond their commercial use. So. One of those things that, yeah. We have this definition, it's kind of like the, the schools thing when we did it. We had this definition in our ordinance, but it was not enumerated anywhere. So, kind of, kind of, but. But that's what the any and all is related to, to towers.
So the definition of a tower would have. Be defined by the height and the structure or, so let's say David Brooks. and the structure, or, so let's say David Brooks down the road got seventeen dump trucks, and he communicated with all his guys through CB radio. He buys a, gets an old electric pole from Rappahannock Electric that's twenty-foot, thirty-foot tall, and he puts an antenna on it and stick it in a hole. Is that a tower?
So you see, right now, on the screen is our definition of tower. A structure of a skeletal framework or construction on which antenna or broadcasting and reception electromagnetic signals is mounted, or which may operate as broadcasting or receiving antenna. Guy wires, framework, or other stabilizing devices are to be treated as part of the structure. So that's in our ordinance right now, but that use is not enumerated anywhere. So the example you use is perfect, but he can't do that right now, because although he defined what it is, there's, it's not enumerated in our ordinance, in any group, so it's not allowed.
But he can do it right now, if you don't, if you don't know, if you don't know it, but how would you know about it?
Well, we'll probably see it.
So them going through the FCC, I'm pretty, I don't know if they have that many based on the frequency. They would have to register with the FCC, right?
The ham radio guys do, yeah.
So with that trigger, that the FCC wouldn't communicate anything to us, to the government, local government.
I don't think in terms of their frequencies, probably not. I think where the FCC, where we would probably get involved is at a height. We start to get to height.
So how much is this a problem for the county, considering with cell phones? I mean, I, I know several trucking companies, and they don't use CBs anymore. They use cell, cell phones that have a two-way radio kind of feature to them, but it's all based on cell signal.
I wouldn't say it's a problem for a county, but there are some users that it could be an issue for.
You said a user, it could be an issue?
There are companies in the county that this could be an issue, yes. So I wouldn't term it as a problem.
So this is, so the text amendment is gonna say what will be allowed and what won't be, correct?
Yeah, and like I say, it will be by special exception, so it won't be a byright situation. Yeah, yeah. And then there's, you know, you could not include any height and let that be a part of the special exception process. So somebody could come in and say, hey, I want to do a twelve-thousand-foot tower, and it's been like, uh, no. Because under the special exception process, you have the ability to impose conditions. So if you say your tower won't be twelve thousand feet, it'll be eighty feet. It'd be eighty feet. So.
Mr. Hughes, do you need a a motion of any type to authorize proceeding with it? Or do I make a motion that we authorize staff to proceed with a text amendment regarding the permitting of towers? Any discussion? Motion by the chair, seconded by Mr. Williams. All those in favor signify. Mr. Young, I'm sorry. Well, y'all are twins anyways. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Always get nervous when I see a lawyer stand up.
Wait a minute, behind it.
Yes, so your, your initiation needs to, excuse me, use the magic words that it be, this initiation be in the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens.
Oh, you want me to bring out the law on four? Okay.
Sorry. The, the language in twenty-two, nine, eighty-six, eight, seven is that that motion being initiated because the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice require.
So you want me to read and listen to your-
I move that we accept what Mr. Havlin said as the motion.
I'll amend my motion to what Mr. Havlin said. How about that?
There we go.
All right. Seconded by Mr. Young on the amended motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Havlin. Alaven, I, I, before I die, I am gonna get it correct. Ladies and gentlemen, I, Commissioners, I have heard that the, there is going to be a governor's seminar held at the Hanover County Courthouse, October the twenty-ninth. I will be in attendance. Primarily, not for the info, as well as for the information, but because it's going to be hosted by the Hanover Tavern, which has great food. I'll be very blunt with you. But if anyone is interested, may I suggest that you get in touch with Mr. Cully's office, get in touch with Pam Hall, and see if you can get yourself aligned on that. It should be very interesting. It's going to be on progress within the rural counties of Virginia. So it's something that's going to be very germane to what we're going through. So I will be in attendance and hopefully see some of y'all there. But here again, get in touch with Pam Hall at Mr. Cully's office and see if you can get yourself in. Other than- It's the governor's seminar. Yeah, so. October twenty-ninth. I think that's a Thursday. I believe. But I did want to share, it's a Wednesday? Okay. I did, did want to share that bit of information with you. So again, get in touch with Pam Hall and say, hey, I'll give you five bucks if you give me, you know, whatever it takes. There being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn to September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five at six-thirty PM?
Make that motion.
And I will second that motion. Seeing none of his brother.
It's a motion by Mr. Young, seconded by everyone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.